Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled Park City Council meeting, October 9th at 7 o'clock. Danielle, will you call the roll?
John Leonard. George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsada. Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A Coram is present, Your Honor.
Okay. Pastor Ron Rhodes is going to do the invocation and Councilman Melvin Kerr is going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone withstand.
Our Father, as always, we are so very grateful to live in this great and wonderful little city. And we thank you, Father, for those who are serving us in this city, who give up of themselves to take the heat on themselves and serve us and make decisions. We ask, Lord, for this council that you give them wisdom and that you give them protection. And, Father, that you be with our police officers in this city as they serve us, Father, and oftentimes have to risk their lives in doing so. I just ask that you protect them and watch over them, and I thank you for them. And I thank you, Father, for our firemen, and I ask you to watch over them as they climb into places like the attic of our church to put out fires and risk their lives and save people's lives sometimes. I thank you, Father. And I pray, Father, for everybody that works for this city. I thank you for whatever it is that they do for us. And I just pray, God, that you bless our little city. And I ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Jim, second. I hear a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda is awards and our presentations. We don't have any tonight. The next item is public forum. We do not have any public forum tonight. Next item is staff reports with Director of Public Works, Eric Minor.
First of all, I'd like to say how excited I am to have this opportunity to serve the city of Park City as the Public Works Director. For the report, October 9th, 2018, Parks Department, we were gearing up for the Brush and Limb Day, but that got rescheduled to 3:00 November. We did hold our Shred It Day on October 6th. We had 66 loads totaling 2,600 pounds. On October 4th, Parks Department sprayed for poison ivy in McLean Park. We got a good control of that right now. And they also assisted the Police Department in transporting gym equipment from Andover to the Administration Building. Streets Department, we did some mowing and trimming on the medians and arterials. And on 25th September, we conducted a 500-foot slurry seal test strip on North Park Road and very happy with the results. And for the Water and Sewer Department, the average work order per day was 30.
Okay. We're glad you're here, Eric. For the benefit of our citizens, is there going to be mulch available in the park for the tree after you do that?
Yes.
Can you tell the citizens where that will be located and when?
I believe it's the...I'll have to get back to the...
It's normally been the West Park lot.
For about a week.
For about a week?
Yeah, Mayor doesn't want it to go over.
Okay.
So, about a week to take.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Glad to have you. Okay, the next agenda item is the consentage item. Do I hear a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a second. Brandy?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. Our next item on the agenda is new business. We have a public hearing. I'm now opening this public hearing. The time is now 7:06. We will start the public hearing. Is anyone in the public wanting to speak at this time? This is open public hearing on special assessments on Prairie Hills 3 and 4. Not seeing anyone, so we will close this public hearing at 7:07. Next item on the agenda, new business, is B, consider an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, as to heretofore authorized by Resolutions Number 922-2016, 923-2016, 924-2016, 927-2016, 928-2016, and 929-2016, and providing for the collection of such special assessments. Larry?
Good evening. Larry Kleeman with Rancson Financial. I work with John Haas, who's a financial advisor to the city. This is part of the process. We're getting ready to permanently finance the cost of these improvements in the Prairie Hills addition. In order to actually special assess that back to the property owners, the benefit, so that they're paying the bond debt service, we have to go through a few steps under state law. John reviewed the costs last month with you. We sent out notices to all the property owners, and they had the opportunity to speak at the hearing just a moment ago. After tonight, you can approve the special assessment ordinance, which is before you. That officially authorizes these levies. We'll send out a second notice to the property owners, and they'll have until November 6th if they want to prepay. And if not, then we'll bond the remaining amount that has not been prepaid. If there's any questions on that, let me know. Otherwise, you have an ordinance before you to approve.
I didn't have it.
Oh, you didn't have a question? Okay. You were lit up online. Okay, so no further questions or discussions. Danielle, will you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Ordinance.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsada. Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Jim?
Okay, I move that we approve the ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, as heretofore authorized by Resolutions Numbered 922-2016, 923-2016, 924, 927, 928, and 929, 2016, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Do I have a second? George?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Danielle, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. John Leonard. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsada. Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
That motion passes 6-0.
That is ordinance 1048-2018.
Thank you. Our second is Item C, an ordinance amending Section 3-104, the Municipal Code of the City of Park City, Kansas pertaining to the prohibition against the consumption of alcohol, liquor on city-owned public property, and repealing the original of said section
Yes, Councilman and Council, this is an ordinance amendment in response to a request that D. Stewart made at the last meeting about the beer garden that they wish to have for a disc golf event later this fall. My memory is that nothing was said at that point, but as when I got back to the office the next day and looked at our ordinances, it was clear that there was on the books a total prohibition against any consumption of alcoholic liquor on city-owned property. And beer, if it's not cereal malt beverage, strong beer is considered alcoholic liquor, and I presume that's what they had in mind for the beer garden. So, in order to accommodate them, I have amended Section 3-104 to provide the same prohibition for city-owned property against the consumption of alcoholic liquor, but provided that there is the ability for a waiver of that for specific applications for events where the alcoholic liquor is to be served by a duly licensed caterer, and that permits either the city council or the city administrator from granting that waiver. The reason I drew it up that way and presented it to you today that way is because there was some uncertainty whether there would be time for you to adopt this ordinance and then by next meeting grant the waiver. I think now maybe the event is past that, but at the time we weren't sure. So, that's the reason to have the administrator in there with the ability to grant the waiver.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Chris is here. Have any questions you have? He's from...Chris, tell us where you're from.
Chris Tendren. I am the owner of Ducks Flying Discs in Wichita, Kansas. I'm also the tournament director for you for now three events here at Park City at McLean Park. I've been partnering with both the city of Park City and Park City Pride to bring disc golfers to you. We've done, like I said, we've done three tournaments this one. The one coming up in two weeks is focused on all amateur level players. So, what we're trying to do is get new golfers here to recognize your golf course and the amenities that you have here. One of the things that we wanted to do was offer them the opportunity to have a beer garden, you know, between rounds and then afterwards during the award ceremony. So, the beer would be contained to that, confined to that area. It would not be allowed out on the golf course or out in the city.
Do you have any questions?
Jack's got it. Jack?
I was going to say he answered my question. He's usually in state parks or city parks and stuff like that. They have a bigger corral, I guess you would call it.
Yeah, we would have it partitioned. But then we would leave also just one other thing I'd like to add. That would be something that our sponsor, which would be Aeroplanes Brewery, Aeroplanes Brewing out of Wichita, they would be responsible for all of that. So, to answer, I believe you amended the piece to recognize only licensed vendors. That would be that licensed vendor.
Okay. Jack?
My thought, and I talked to D. a little bit about that, if this should occur, it should be confined to the swimming pool. It is fenced off. It has lights. Also, they could use the concession stand as an area to distribute it. It has gates, so it could be, people can stand there and patrol people, so they can't walk out without, with a container of liquid in their hands. I think that would be the ideal spot for this.
So, based on what you're saying, Jack, do we need to do an amendment, or can we just do it, vote on it, and motion to vote?
Well, if I have the authority, that's what I'm going to tell them they're going to have to do.
Okay.
Because it's got to be controlled. Otherwise, they're going to have to build something to contain these people, you know, with either construction fencing or something else.
Okay.
And this is already done. It's easy for them, and makes your life a lot easier, and it's centrally located.
Centrally located, right there.
Okay. Tom?
This is an ordinance, and if it's something we're going to address, we need to address it citywide, because you could have another park that could have one in a month. So, like I said, I don't want to have an ordinance amendment for one event. I know our attorney's making face now, but we're narrowing things down to a swimming pool, and that may not be where this happens next.
No, this is my... The discussion about the swimming pool has nothing to do with the ordinance Friday.
Okay, well, what I was hearing...
This is all conversation that's unrelated to the face of the ordinance.
Okay.
The provision that requires a duly licensed caterer takes care of a definition by virtue of the caterer having to file an application and get a license granted from the state of Kansas, where they have to designate where they're going to serve the alcohol. They can't serve it outside that. That can be anywhere that they wish to make it. That doesn't need to be spelled out in this ordinance, and there's no intention on my part to try to do that.
No, and that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I was hearing the city narrowing it down from another angle over here. And we need to keep it open. If we're going to pass an ordinance that you can do beer, we need to keep it open so you can do it. So, and then event by event handle it, so.
Right. Okay. George?
Well, anybody who thinks that people are not drinking beer in the park and doing all that stuff now is a dreamer. You know, I understand we want to put some kind of stamp on this, but I'm a realist, you know. People are drinking beer up there, let's face it. I don't know why we're trying to...well...
Anybody else? Okay, do I hear...or Tom?
I'm going to make a motion. We approve this ordinance amendment as recommended by our council.
You have a second.
Attorney.
Brandy?
I second.
Have a motion and a second.
George, may I, sorry, may I ask? I heard that the motion was to approve the ordinance amendment. Now, we're not amending the ordinance. The ordinance is being approved as...
No, I mean, as presented tonight.
As presented.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Danielle, will you call the roll?
John Leonard. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsada. Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
That motion passes 6-0. Our next item is Item D, consider lying a slurry seal on hillside from the north property line of the cemetery to the bridge north of 69th and Scottsville, Charleston, to Fontenac with a cost of $47,035.10 to be paid out of the 2018 budget. Streets, special street and highway fund. Jack?
I think we'll work. Okay, there you go. You look up there on your little TV sets. And Eric mentioned this. On the left is the road coming out of the park going north. You can see all the cracks and everything in that road. The test road that they were willing to do for us, because we wanted to see how well this looked. And on the right, it's after they applied the material. You can see there's a big difference. It covers up those cracks. Now, cracks are going to come back, okay? And usually cracks come back in about a year or so, but at least these will be filled with oil and stuff. And you can imagine what kind of labor it would take to hand fill every single crack on that road.
So, for the benefit of our audience, what is a slurry seal?
Slurry seal is oil and what we call a chat. It's a rock mixture. And you can see it there. It covers up the cracks and also bridges some of the smaller cracks as well. Now, what we're wanting to do here is, part of the problem that we've got is we've got a lot of street work, as George Capps has brought to our attention, and very little money. And so, we have to be creative in what we do for the least amount of money. Now, I bid out a scrub seal, which is real similar to this. I sent it to six contractors, only got one bid back, and it was $245,000. So, I think at $41,000, this is a bargain. And so, I'm recommending that we go ahead and do this for not only hillside, because we invested $84,000 into hillside, and there's a lot of these type of cracks on hillside left, and get that covered up for this winter. And then also, if you've been down Scottsville, it's got a lot of cracks too, and this would help. Now, in the past, we've done a double by two minus seal. We call it chip and seal. This is real similar, except it doesn't have the amount of chips and the double coating as that would cost.
How long would something like this last, Jack?
I would say two, three years at least.
And then come back and do...
Do it again if you need to.
Just keep doing it over and over again?
Right. You know, it's worth attempting to do something, because like I say, we have almost 80 miles of roads. We've got five miles of Broadway that we've got to do something with, or we're going to have a terrible situation on our hands. And we've got to come up with more methods of treating our roads. And so, if you've been through Wichita and seen all the patching, all these patch deals, that's their attempt to keep their costs down. Also, like I say, I've sent this out to bids for six contractors. They're all busy, all busy. And so, this would, there's another item that goes along with this, but this will take care of Scottsville, about two blocks of Scottsville, and hillside, about a mile of hillside.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Jim?
This area on hillside, this is where we patched.
Correct.
Six, eight months ago, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this would just address the areas between and then seal the areas we already patched?
This would seal the areas that weren't patched.
Okay.
Hoping to keep them good enough so we don't have to come back and do some more patching.
Would you say this is, you know, one of the higher priorities when you look at all the streets? Is this, I mean, I haven't driven all the streets and, you know, there are people that have.
We went through there in Scottsville, and hillside is about the worst right now.
Okay.
I mean, we got others, okay?
Yeah.
But we're at the end of the year. It's hard to even get contractors to bid it. This was kind of a deal that we thought we could get this done by the end of the year. If we tried to do more than that, we may have a problem. Now, first of next year, we're going to have to look at how are we going to address Broadway?
Sure.
Five miles of road. And so, we're really going to have to look at that. But we have about $280,000 in the special street and highway fund currently. This is going to take 40 of it. There's another issue on the agenda. It will take a little bit more. But it will give us a good amount of money to really look at what we're going to do with Broadway and some of the other streets at the beginning of the year. Like I say, these contractors get tied up, get these contracts, and it's hard to even get a contractor to bid, because they're all tied up with work. So, we've got to hit it early next year, make sure we get in line to do some work.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? My thing isn't working.
That's, I just wanted to make sure it was, I'm big on, I want to stay ahead of the highways and stay caught up, so I wanted to make sure it was a priority.
Right now, if I could take a little more time, we are doing things other than this. What is happening is the trash trucks are pulling up, and the weight of them are pushing the asphalt down and pushing the curb and gutter up like this, all over the city. This is happening. So, we've went in, our crews went in. We've had a contractor come in, replace the curb and gutter, and our crew comes in, digs out the concrete, I mean, the asphalt and stuff, and patches it so it matches back up again. We've been doing a lot of that. So, it's not that this is the only street work that we've done this year. We've done other street work this year, and primarily it's where the road evasive given out, similar to what we've done on hillside, except our guys did it. And the reason we used a contractor on hillside, it was just way too much for our guys to do it.
Okay. George?
Well, two things. Talking about the trash trucks, you know, our streets are built for about 18,000-pound loads, and we're letting 55,000 and 60,000-pound trucks run on them. When these streets were built and stuff, the trash haulers were hauling, trashing the smaller trucks, you know, two axles. And now, they're running these big heavy things through there, and we're never going to be able to keep our streets up for that. And the other question I had, who's contractor? Contractor. Do you know who that is? It's...
It's right here.
Midwestern.
South Central.
South Central.
South Central.
Yeah.
No further questions or discussion. Do we have a motion? Jim?
Okay. I would move that we approve the lying of a slurry seal on hillside from the north property line of the cemetery to the bridge north of 69th and Scottsville, Charleston, to Fontenac with a cost of $47,035.10 to be paid out of 2018 budget special street and highway fund.
Have a second. Brandy?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. Item E, consider striping hillside from north property line of cemetery to bridge north of 69th for $11,200 to be paid out of the 2018 budget, special street and highway fund. Jack?
Yes, you can see how black this is, and you can imagine driving down that area, which has no streetlights in the middle of the night, and easily run off the road because you have nothing to guide you. I don't know if you've ever driven the turnpike after they have did something similar to this. It's terrible to try to see where you're at. So, we need to put white lines along the side and then a center line as well. We're using paint. We're not using the more epoxy-type stuff. It's three times the expense.
Any questions for Jack? Do I hear a motion? Tom?
I make a motion. We approve the striping of hillside from north property line of cemetery to the bridge north of 69th Street for $11,200.
Have a second. Jim?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. Item F, consider approval of disclosure compliance services proposal from Gilmore &amp; Bell for years 2018 to 2022. Danielle?
Council President and Council, included in your packet is an agreement with Gilmore &amp; Bell for continuing disclosure compliance services for the city of Park City. The city is required annually to report to the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, an annual report via a website called Emma. This annual report includes all the notices required under the disclosure agreements. They also provide all fiscal, Gilmore &amp; Bell would provide all fiscal and operating data with summary financial information. This engagement ensures that the city is in compliance with MSRB, the Rulemaking Board. Gilmore &amp; Bell would be the designated agent for the sole purpose of submitting to MSRB our annual reports, our notices, and any material events. I recommend you approve this agreement, which totals $5,400, which would be $1,000 every year for the first three years, and $1,200 for year four and year five. I will let you know that the city may terminate this agreement at any time with a 30-day notice. So, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Tom?
That's from last time. But I'll go ahead and make a motion. We approve it.
You have a second.
I didn't have any questions either, so I'd second it.
Okay, Jim? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Item G, consider purchasing a planer, a planer for the street department for $16,142.40 to be paid with special street and highway money. Jack?
Yes, I'm sure you've all been down 61st Street towards the interstate and stuff, and had a few bumps and stuff. The mayor's been getting some complaints about that. What we typically do is we had a planer that we put on our Bobcat that has bits on it, and it grinds it down, so it takes away the bump. Unfortunately, when we bought our new Bobcat, the old planer does not fit the new Bobcat, so it's useless for us. So, we went out and got bids, $16,142.40 for a new one. It'll last for 10 years or more. To rent one, it's a... To rent one, it's $1,000 some odd dollars. And so, you just use it 16 times, and you've bought it almost. I believe, I haven't looked at the old planer. Maybe we can put it out there on the auction and might get something for it. If somebody still has an old Bobcat that they can operate it with, so...
Okay.
And that could bring anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000.
Any questions for Jack?
On purple wave.
Tom?
I'll make a motion. We approve this purchase.
And GM?
I'd second that.
You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passes 6-0. It's time for governing body remarks. I'll go ahead and start. I wanted to... And I believe, Daniella, if I'm wrong, this is your last council meeting with us. I wanted to thank you for the time spent in service to Park City and all that you've done and all that you've been part of in getting this city right as far as financial matters. So, I appreciate your service, and I also wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Somebody's also having a birthday.
That's right. I almost forgot. I won't ask you your age, but happy birthday, Daniella. Also, I wanted to say about our city administrator search. We're coming along on that, just to let people know. We're meeting with the actual firm next week to actually progress on seeing what we need to do next in that search. So, we're excited about that. We'll go ahead and start with remarks by council members. We'll start with Jim.
I echo those comments and can't add anything to it. So, I have nothing to add.
I just want to say I miss you, Daniella. And welcome, Eric.
Well, I think we're all going to miss Daniella. I would like to see the council in the future, because this problem's not going away. In the future, when we're developing and building new streets, that we look at building streets that will handle truck traffic that we're running on. Otherwise, we're just going to be continuously... It's going to be a vicious cycle if we don't do that. Or if we replace a street, we ought to look at what's it going to take to get that to hold up? And that's all I got.
Thank you. Tom? Welcome, Eric. Sorry to see Daniella go. I do see our new Finance Director sitting in the audience tonight, taking notes. Welcome. So, that's all I got. Melvin?
I want to say thanks for all you did there, Daniella, and happy birthday. Dan, welcome aboard. Eric, welcome aboard. So, that's all I had.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion and we adjourn.
Second?
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1794.61]